The April 19, 2021 Special Wassily City Council Meeting is called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, council, please put away cell phones. If you have personal business to attend to during the meeting, please move for a recess. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Rousa?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Bernie?
Here.
Councilmember Vlach?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
You do have a quorum, Madam Mayor. We have councilmembers Rousa, Johnson, Vlach, and Brown participating with us in person. Councilmembers Bernie and Harvey are telephonic.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Mr. Johnson, would you lead us, please? Please, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes? Hearing none, the agenda will stand as presented. Public participation. We have no one signed up. So, Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Thank you. Our item of business this evening is the fiscal year 2022 budget discussion and departmental presentations will be in a committee of the whole. This is reference ordinance serial number 2121, providing for the adoption of the annual budget for the fiscal year 2022 and appropriating funds to carry out said budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion to enter committee of the whole?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to enter committee of the whole.
Second that.
It's been moved by Councilman Rousa and seconded by Councilmember Vlach to enter into the committee of the whole. Is there any objections? Hearing none, we are now in the committee of the whole. The time is 6:02 PM. And tonight, we will start with the museum. In your budget binder, it's on page 156 through 158. In your e-packet, it's 172 and 174. We will do it by account numbers. So, account number 10.
Account number 10, we increased our staffing by .5, and at the same time, we reduced our temporary staffing by a significant amount, which really makes then a net loss, or not a net loss, a net wash, if you will, in terms of staffing. And I was under the impression that the intent of increasing our staffing to .5 would be an increase.
Bethany, would you please come forward? And for the councils, this is Bethany Follett, and she is museum curator.
I'm sorry, did I jump the gun?
No, I forgot. So, me and you both are at fault.
Okay, I'm on my fault.
No, you're good. On account number 10, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Okay. Could you please explain your thinking in staffing? Because I can see that you justified an increase in staffing, and at the same time, I see a net wash.
I will direct this to Director Tankersley.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, so, the idea behind this is we're obviously under 1010 regular wages, increasing the existing part-time position to a full-time position. That's the increase that you're seeing. The offset to that is the temporary hires. In the museum, they have on calls, if you will, temporary staff that they have. That number has been reduced to augment the full-time position that's being created. So, that's under the 1020 line, okay?
Correct. I understand that.
Right.
But the way that I was reading it is that there was some benefit for having increased staffing, and the way I'm looking at it is, I'm not really seeing an increased staffing. I'm just saying.
Madam Mayor, I can't, I can't hear what he's saying.
Is your microphone on?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't have my microphone on.
Okay, he's got his microphone on now, Tim.
Okay, I'm sorry, Tim. The way I'm looking at it is that the justification sheet said that there would be some benefits for moving to an increased staff, and I personally agree. And yet, at the same time, I'm seeing that when we go to a full-time staff in the one position and then reduce our temporary staff, we're not really having an increase in labor or benefit.
That would be true, Councilmember Johnson, over, as a net, okay? But when we talk about full-time, if you will, or part-time benefited positions of the city, that's in your regular. The temporary is augmented for varying reasons. But as a net, you are correct.
And I will say, one of the justifications, again, I'm willing to give up my temporary people who may or may not be available to have a full-time person year-round, all the time with me. So, it was a, I have to give something up to get something. So, while the net does not show an increase in staffing, it provides more permanent staffing year-round versus a temporary staffing that, depending on how I work them, with the temporary staffing that the Parks Department has, if they work 40 hours a week, they can only work 89 days, then they have to let them go. So, I would only have staff, I would have to let them go, hire a new temporary person. If my part-time person is full-time, they've already been trained, they're already prepared, and they're there basically as my stand-in if I have to go to a meeting or if I have to go elsewhere. So, to me, it's more of a benefit to have a full-time person there that you've already trained.
I totally agree. That's not the issue. I was simply saying, if you're going to have an increase in, or you're expecting an increase in number of people coming through, and possibly even then additional revenues with paying people, that we're not really increasing our staff to do that. So, my thinking is, is that why should we be decreasing our temporary staff, considering that we're trying to increase our exposure and the revenue, or potential revenue that could come with that? Does that make any sense?
It does, I agree.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Now, you keep mentioning temporary staff like there's more than one?
Correct. So, what I'm able to do is, when I work them part-time, I can keep them longer than the 89 days.
So, you have how many?
The amount that I have right now allotted through this budget line item, I am able to have one extra in the summertime and one extra in the wintertime. And then I have a part-time, we have a 92-year-old tour guide who we hire as well. He graduated from Wassily High, he has the knowledge of the area, and so he comes back every summer to do special tours through our townsite and the museum.
Oh, that's nice.
So, technically, I have a space for four, but I can only work them so many hours. And they're only seasonal. A lot of the people that we do hire, they can only work during the summer because they're teachers, and so they go back to school during the fall.
What do you, what keeps you busy in the winter?
In the wintertime, we have all of our behind-the-scenes programming and research and interpretation that we do for collections care. The main purpose of a museum is actually the stewardship of the collections that we hold for the community. That includes all of the, making sure that the paperwork is properly, that we have title to all the items that have been donated, that we have care for them, which means they're rehoused, they're housed properly, that they're cleaned, that they're condition-reported. We have to do those condition reports annually, and that we have the exhibits, that we change things out. People don't like seeing the same thing for 40 years. So, we'd like to, we do work more on changing those out. We have actually recently, since this position was created, wasn't really created, it was transitioned to, we have added an Old Town Autumn Fest, a summer block party, and expanded our Christmas celebration on top of our exhibits, install, de-install, temporary visiting exhibits, as well as all the programming that goes with that. We also increased our summer programming to a weekly event that we did before the pandemic of inviting the community. So, every Thursday night was nights at the museum, and so we'd invite community members to come out. We've also increased our rentals as well, because we've provided spaces that we can do rentals. So, a staff member has to be on.
And when did you do all this?
This was 2019. We've been, actually, we've been doing this, actually, since 2009 was when this all happened. So, we've been surviving since 2009, but this added person, having a second full-time person there, would allow us to be more thriving than just surviving.
And then you would not request your temporary help? Is that what you're saying? Or would you still need, besides a 92-year-old man, but you'd still need temporary help in the summer?
We would be able, with the changes, we would be able to have one other temporary person. So, during the summertime, there would be three staff, and then in the wintertime, we would go down to our two. So, actually, I'm sorry, we would do the four, because we'd have our 92-year-old tour guide. So, we'd have four during the summer, and then the two of us in the wintertime.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions?
Yes, one final follow-up question. Do you feel that you have enough staffing? Especially during the summer?
I think, I think everyone's comment to that would be no. With the way the city is expanding and with what is expected of us, none of us have enough staffing.
Any other, Troy?
If I might, I'd like to explain a little bit. You've heard Bethany refer to her temps in this 89-days kind of concept. The development of that came through ACA, the Affordable Cares Act, and that's a federal law that came through, and all municipalities are dealing with this. When it came out, it was, it's very painful, actually. But basically, is what it says, is that if you work a temporary hire in excess of an average 30-hour week, then you are running the risk, if you will, of providing them health care. And because they're temporary hires, we don't provide them health care. So, the 89-day rule comes that says, you can hire someone and work them a 40-hour week, but on the 89th day, you better term them, because the city then runs the risk of providing health care. Or, you keep them under that, and on an average, say, 20-hour week, and you can keep them indefinite, okay? So, depending on the department we talk about, some departments, they can do these 20-hour weeks and whatnot. Other departments, not so much. So, that's what we're talking about. So, she might have one temp, say, but that one might be three people throughout the year because of that 89-day rule.
I see, I see. That makes sense.
Okay, is there any other questions? Hearing none, we're going to account 20. Account 30. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the library. Thank you very much for your time. You're free to go.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, councilmembers.
The library in your budget binder is page 168 through 170. In your e-packet, it's 184 to 186. And we will start with account 10. 50.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Line item 5030 is $24,000 some-odd dollars, and I see that equates basically being driven by postage. I'm just curious, is that postage related to interlibrary transfers?
Yes, it's interlibrary transfers, but it's also, we're part of the Wassily Library catalog, and so, being part of that network, people can place holds through our catalog to have anything brought from Juno, Fairbanks, Sparrow even, and then we, that postage also gets their materials back to them. And then, in exchange for being able to get items from them, they can get items from us. So, essentially, each library in the consortium, or the group pays for the postage to send it out, they pay to send it back. So, that's where that postage is coming from.
Thank you very much. I'm a big user of that. I wouldn't mind paying as an off, just to offset my costs of the services that you are providing me, but that's just my general comment.
Account 60. Mr. Brown?
Wait for you to get to the next line.
Oh. On the, on 99, is that?
You said, are there any other questions?
Oh. Any other questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilman Brown, to the finance office. Do the library bring in any revenue to offset what the city provides?
Revenue provided from the library is...
Minimal?
Minimal. You know, I mean, there's the collection costs that we're, we receive, copy fees, for example. I'm sorry?
A little bit from the rental.
Yeah, and a little bit, he's got the...
I didn't know whether he rented the place out for...
Yeah, he's got the rental rooms, the conference rooms. So, a little bit from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Are we utilizing the rental rooms in the library currently? I mean, are they available to rent? I know they were closed there for a while due to COVID. I was wondering if that's...
Through the mayor, currently, we're not renting the NPR. With, we still have a, in the public buildings, we have a mask mandate, and we're still doing the social distancing. And part of that is, we have, we don't have as much furniture out. In fact, a lot of our furniture, we're encouraging people to come, get their materials, and check out, and not hang around as much as we would like in the, under normal conditions. And so, we have, one half of our NPR currently has, where that furniture is, that would normally be out on the floor. Thank you.
Is there any further questions?
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor? Through the mayor to Councilman Brown to further explain that revenue number, at the bottom of page 168, the very bottom, you'll see how the department is actually funded. You see a very small portion that's intergovernmental. Those are small grants that the library receives, and then there's direct library revenue, and then the rest of it is general fund.
Hearing no other questions, thank you so much, Zane. You're free to go. We are moving on to recreation service. It's budget binder, page 173, 174. In your e-packet, it is 189, 190. Category, the account 10.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Johnson?
Okay, on page 171, you're listing a person at .3, which would pretty much equate to my mind of a budget of what you're seeing there on line 10. The question that I've got is, .3 is definitely a part-time person, so I'm assuming this is a shared position?
Yes, sir. Through the...
Madam Mayor, Councilman Johnson, so, Director Clapper is actually split, her funding is actually split 30% in rec. services, 70% over in the sports complex.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to account 20. Is there any further questions? Hearing none. Ms. Clapper? You are free to go.
He's gonna know.
No, you've got to come back. Sorry, you have to come back, which is, okay. The budget binder for the Menard Center is 241 to 242. The e-packet is 257 to 258. Okay, we're doing the Menard Center. Account number 10.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The storage building, this is purchased, purchased property, I'm just, or, I'm sorry, oh, construction services, okay. Is that, is that on, on grounds there? Is that, what's the, what's the expected duration of that project?
Are you making reference to 4091? That is actually contractual services, which is people that we contract for the Menard Sports Centers, such as our elevator service protections, inspections, guardian security.
Sorry, I may have misdirected you. I'm looking at 45, 34. Madam Mayor?
Troy?
So, we use the account, the storage building for this. And Councilman Rousa, if you will, if you could move to page 247, there's an explanation there for that 250,000. It's actually for the, a large pavilion to go on grounds to help the Friday market. It's the plan for that. It says storage, storage building for the account number, but the plan is the 250,000 for, to build a large pavilion for the Friday market.
It's actually the Wednesday market.
Or, well, what?
It's okay.
Friday, Wednesday, Monday.
The concept was to move the Wednesday market, which is currently being held at I Did a Park. There's no parking, and they wanted to move that onto different grounds.
So, this is not the farmer's market, it's the...
It would be the farmer's market, yeah.
Oh, okay.
The thought is to build the three pavilions.
What, and my question is, what's the expected duration of that project? Is it summed up in this fiscal year? Or is this the entirety of the, of the budget needed for that project?
Yeah, it's, for this upcoming fiscal year, we're just going to bid out a series of smaller pavilions with some additive alternates, but that is an entire budget.
Is it sole purpose, that market? Or is this leasable? Or are there other community outreach ideas, or...
Councilmember Rousa, through the mayor, the whole intention for anything that we do, the minorities, under the enterprise system, so we generate revenues very seldom, except for this Wednesday market. Primarily, any pavilion or any building on the premise, there is a rental fee.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to account 50. 99. Yes, Mr. Johnson?
This is actually a question for Troy. I'll, I'll ask the question here. On the depreciation of the building, we're depreciating it at the rate of 38%. Is that correct?
For the, for the building and all its equipment and vehicles and everything else, it's, it's on grounds.
So, that means we depreciate the whole building in about two and a half years?
No, sir. You're at about, now, yeah, in round numbers, you're about 38% depreciated at this point.
Oh, I see. Okay, never mind. Thank you. No further questions?
Is there any further questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Brown?
No questions, but for those who haven't, I would strongly encourage you to go over to the Menard Center and have the deputy give you her spiel for future plans and what she's doing. I think you'd be impressed and see that the budget is, is being well-spent and preserved.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Clapper.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, Mr. Harvey?
Sorry, I, same question from the Menard Center that I had to the library about rentals, if they're open and being, they're allowed to be utilized.
Absolutely, sir. We are open for business, and we invite anyone on our reader boards, our advertising, we are soliciting now for rentals, we're renting, actually, into '22, '23. There's lots of good things coming in store, and we are looking at, hopefully, pre-COVID numbers.
Awesome, glad to hear it. And, Madam Mayor, I know the library's kind of done nothing with it, it's had, you know, comments with, if the Menard Center is able to have their rental, rental space be utilized, is the library, if the only hotel is the storage of the furniture, I'd like to see if there's possibly something we could do that, do about that, so that space can be properly utilized as well.
Okay, take it into consideration. Is there any further questions? Joni, you are free to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we are moving on to public safety, and it's 116 through 118. And we will start with account 10. Is there any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Sir?
Okay, the added staff that you're adding to a mechanic, which budget sheet is that going to be reflected in?
Madam Mayor, that's under item 10 of the list. It's on public safety garage.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to account 20. 40.
Question there. Madam Mayor? Councilmember Rousa, I'm just curious, what the repair and maintenance increase is a result of? Is it because of the new facility? And then, if so, you know, it's brand-new, right? So...
Right, so, to council through the mayor, the repair and maintenance covers actually a couple of things. It covers the building as well as administrative vehicles. So, it covers mechanical stuff, tires, things like that on, on the vehicles, as well as any repairs that may happen on the building. And that's kind of based looking at what we've needed to do so far on the building. There have been a few things or changes that we've made in the building itself, and just try and plan for the future on that.
Okay. Councilman Rousa, if you look on page 117, each line item is... Okay, Councilman Rousa, if you look on page 117, each line item is explained.
I understand. I just have a short period of time here to ask the chief, so I can read this, of course, but good to hear it from the, well, I don't want to see the horse's mouth, certainly. That's disrespectful, but thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not sure, back up to 30, 32, and we haven't got to 520 yet, but to the chief, to the finance officer, I'm just looking at a police department, seemed like a low figure for insurance. And maybe I'm reading the line wrong.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Brown, did you mean legal, or?
Legal, I'm sorry, legal.
30, 30, okay. So, the legal line, most of the divisions produce a budget for legal that could be consistent with union contract, for example, or maybe a small legal clarification question maybe the chief has.
Okay.
A full-on claim against the city, depending on where that goes or looks like, within the non-departmental budget, which we have not got to yet, there is some monies there for a bigger claim.
Okay, all right, all right, yeah. I just thought for police department, there's always somebody filing a complaint and.
Right, and we would also, you know, I'm of the mindset when we budget for legal, legal's kind of one of those things that you could, you know, be in the short run and budget low, or be in the long run and budget high. And when you budget high, what is, what is that number? And what is that, I mean, really, in, in the budgeting world, they really just call that a contingency. And we can't budget for contingencies in the budget world. So, that's the purpose of us coming back to you folks when we have to appropriate more funds, and legal, of course, or a claim like that would be absolutely one of those things we'd come back to you on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
James Harvey.
Has joined.
Madam Mayor, I did have, Councilmember Rousa, I did have a couple of other questions, but were you done going through the?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
We are on account number 50. Account number 60.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Wanted to inquire about 6016. Are officers typically responsible to purchase their own uniforms?
Through the mayor, the council, typically, no, they're not. There are, the department supplies their basic uniform needs, where you might have some, an officer may want a, I don't know, particular style of handcuffs, for example, and they may choose to purchase that on their own. But we, the department supplies their, their basic uniform needs.
The follow-up question, is $1,300 enough of a budget to supply 28 officers with fresh uniforms?
The, actually, what we're looking at here is the administration budget, which consists of myself and my three clerks. So, yeah, just looking at it from that standpoint, I think it's adequate.
This doesn't include the union employees, or there's some, there's a?
This only includes myself and the three clerks.
Okay, thank you. That's just my lack of understanding of how you're structured. Appreciate the answer.
Okay. Account number 69. Account number 99. Is there any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember Rousa, I have one, one additional question. Is there, is there an increased budget reflected here to support the expansion of the reserve program?
To the council, through the mayor, the reserve budget is, I believe, addressed on the patrol budget, which is a couple of pages further in the book.
Thank you, I'll wait.
So, that was addressed, pardon me, this Councilmember Johnson, so the patrol budget is which sheet?
Number eight.
Page 122 in the book.
Okay, 122 in the book, thank you. We're not there yet.
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
If you look at your sheet.
Got it.
It will tell you what category that we are. Okay, we are moving on to public safety, multitask drug enforcement, and your budget binder is 119, in your E-packet is 135. And account number 10 on the multitask drug enforcement. Number 20. 50. 60. Is there any further questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So, is what I'm seeing here then is interdepartmental government funding is 75,000 for this position, is that correct?
Mr. Tankersley.
Madam Mayor, to Councilmember Johnson, so this was a four-year agreement for the drug DEA cop, and I'm probably not saying that right, chief, but in any case, this was a, you know, Palmer was involved, we're involved, and they assign an officer, this is one officer that's assigned, and we're on our fourth-year agreement. That fourth year says that the city, you're on the hook for 100% of the cost. Now, what we're proposing here is 75,000. That 75,000 is actually, hopefully, will be appropriated from the Matsuburo through us, or to us, I should say, to help fund this.
Very good.
Any further questions? Then we are moving on to public safety, general investigations. It's page 120 in your binder and 136 in your E-packet.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
To the council in general, this particular budget encompasses one sergeant of investigation, one investigator, and one acting investigator, police officer two that's acting.
Okay. Account number 10. Number 20. 30. 40. 50. 60. 99. Is there any further questions? Moving on to public safety, patrol, page 122 in your budget binder and 138 in your E-packet. Account number 10. 20. 30. 40.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Line item 6012, you have a decrease here for ammunition in terms of, I'm assuming the vast majority of that is training. It's a significant decrease in training, apparently, range time, or whatever, considering that ammunition has skyrocketed, that just caused my attention.
So, to the council, through the mayor, we do have a reduction in, in our ammunition, however, that does not equal a reduction in training in any shape or form. We actually have a pretty large stockpile of ammunition, and are actually in a position where we need to use some of that ammunition, because of shelf life, so to speak, and we are replacing ammunition as, as we, as we can. As you mentioned, it, it's difficult to get, it takes quite a while to come in. But, yeah, we, we're actually sitting on a pretty large stockpile of ammunition that needs to get used up in a training environment.
True, but our replacement cost of it is probably double of what you had last year.
Well, it, it has gone up, I wouldn't say double for us. We, we don't get charged excise tax or taxes. It's not like, you can't compare what we're paying for bullets, that what you would pay for around a sportsman's warehouse.
Okay.
Troy.
So, when we talk about ammunition, this has been a yearly issue for the chief in this department. They end up, based on budget, they write a purchase order for, a blanket purchase order for all kinds of ammunition, right? And it takes virtually that entire fiscal year and going into the next fiscal year before they actually receive it. So, is what you're seeing, and you, it's indicative of that line, if you see where in this current year, in '21, we originally budgeted $20,000. But in the amended budget, you see $34,000. Because what you're seeing is a carryover purchase order from '20 that came into '21 that's actually increased that budget line, okay? Where that ammunition was received, and, and if I look, probably paid for in '21. You'll probably see the same thing when we go from '21 into '22 because of the length of time that it takes to get ammunition. So, it's reflecting a decrease, that 14,000, because it's looking at the amended budget. All right, does that make sense? So, it, it might appear like it's a decrease in spending, when in fact, it's really flatlined from the prior year, I mean, from the carryovers.
Right, I just wanted to make sure we weren't shorting ourselves, that's all.
Exactly.
Okay, we're going to back up to account 50.
Mayor.
Yes.
Not that it's a, a big deal, but the printing and binding, so it's gone down, it looks like we're, we have business cards. What did we used to pay for that we're not now?
We, last, this current fiscal year, we had to up our card because we changed addresses. So, everybody in the department needed brand-new business cards when we made the move. So, that, that increased what we normally need. So, now we're kind of back down to normal.
Okay, probably don't give out a ton, huh?
Well, we give out quite a few, but when everybody, you got 30 people that need new business cards.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember Rousa, line 5082, staff development, I could see in 2021 budget, we, there was $74,500 adopted. When you see the actual amount spent in staff development in 2019, even in 2020, that was 8,819, 21, I would, I guess, is that, is that because, my question initially was, was that because of COVID, until I looked at the 2019 staff development number? So, curious, what, what explanation is there for that?
To the council, through the mayor, I guess, I can't speak as to what happened in 2019. Maybe subjectively, the Alaska Police Standards Council, at one point in time, provided a lot of funding for training. They, they collect funds through tickets and, and through legislation and things like that, and they actually funded most of the department's training at one point in time. As budgets became tighter, that started to go away. And in fact, now, it used to be that the state paid for us to send somebody to the academy, now that's not the case, we have to pay for somebody going through the academy. Now, COVID, you're, you're correct in saying, in questioning if COVID had something to do with spending last year, and it did. We had, we've had a year where almost all training has been, been canceled. So, for example, travel, we really haven't used anything out of the travel budget because we can't travel anywhere. But we're, we're starting to come back up to speed on that. You also see some differences in what we're looking for to, to fund through this coming budget over, over past years. So, you know, we've got, we have an academy, we're pre-planning for an academy for three, three officers. And we're also looking to add a commander's, police and staff commander's school to that, which is a 10-week college-level commander's school. So, those are additional things that are, are adding costs to this year's budget.
Are the other sources of funding that may, may still exist for training, are they reflected in this summary of resources at the bottom of the page here, intergovernmental? Is that, is that part of what makes up that, that 155,000, or, or no?
No, I don't recall any, any funds coming through from a training perspective.
We will, I'm sorry, to the council, through the mayor, we will occasionally be able to take advantage of a, maybe a local grant or something like that, that where an organization provides funding for a specific class or training, or they invite the police department to participate at, at no cost or a limited cost. So, that, that occasionally happens. The Alaska Peace Officers Association may support some, some training. There are some funding things, but it's not specifically for SLA, it's for law enforcement in general, typically.
Thank you, appreciate that. Of course, you know, I'm very supportive of police officer training. I think it couldn't be spent wrong, for sure, if it's applied to training patrol officers. I think that's an excellent use of money.
Okay, we are moving on to account 60. 70. 99.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
This is actually a question more for Troy. This last fall, we appropriated money for the purchase and equipage of several new patrol cars, and yet I see line items here relating to the vehicle fund. So, was the appropriation that we made sort of accounted for out of the 300,000 on a continuing basis that we sort of use up every year? Is that how that purchase happened?
So, the police department contributes through all these divisions, 500,000 a year, and to the vehicle fund. You're only reflecting 310 out of the patrol, is the majority of the vehicles there. But the, the vehicles that were, or, excuse me, the money that was transferred into the vehicle fund, the vehicle fund then writes a PO and acquires the vehicles as such. Now, due to COVID, of course, those plants were shut down, very aggravating the police department. However, they're on order, that's, that's the routine response we're getting right now, as far as they're coming. So, yes, I mean, we, we order them through the vehicle fund for the replacements as.
So, my, really, really, my question should have been phrased that the expenditure, the transfer of fund that we had earlier in the fall was actually a budgeted expense using the, the funds that we had for vehicle replacement?
Right.
Okay, now I understand, thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So, in the summary of expenditures, under personnel, and I guess you can see it in, you know, the other line items as well, but there's, you know, between the actual and the adopted budget for 2020, there's a, there's a pretty big gap in personnel expense. the adopted budget for 2020, there's a, there's a pretty big gap in personnel expenses. Is that primarily because of having, you know, your budget was for a certain number of staff, and that certain number of staff didn't exist in reality, that you had open positions throughout that fiscal year, or?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Rouse, so that decrease that you're seeing in the personnel is looking at the amended budget, obviously comparing to the existing budget. When we talk about last year's budget, and even under the actual of '19, for example, the prior police chief was a temporary police chief. He was, his funding came from temporary wages. And that was primarily because he was a retired annuitant from PERS. So the city technically could not hire him as a full-time person, as a full-time employee, even though he was an employee of the city. He was deemed temporary. And so budgetarily speaking, and the actual expenses went under temporary wages. So this decrease you're seeing, as you're comparing a prior police chief, their temporary wages were drastically decreased to regular wages. Okay? Does that make sense? So you're seeing a decrease.
It does. Am I reading it wrong to see a $900,000 gap there? Is that?
$900,000, where are you seeing that?
Just the difference between the adopted budget for the year and what was actually spent?
I apologize, I am not seeing what you're looking at.
And I could be wrong, so that's why I'm asking, so.
So you're looking at FY '21 amended budget, or?
Adopted. I guess they're the same.
The 4,016.
Yeah, I'm actually, so down under the summary of expenditures.
Right.
Personnel.
The 3.1 million?
Yep.
Okay.
And then the actual?
Of what? So 2.2?
Yeah.
So 2.2, 3.1, actual to adopted budget is an increase?
Okay, I'm sorry. So the actual figure is not, it's not, it's from the previous year.
Yeah, that's the audited numbers.
So we don't have the figure from fiscal year '21 yet? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can tell you pretty close to where we're at today, but we're not going to.
Any further questions?
Just a comment here, so, is what I'm really seeing is, due to the fact that you have open positions right now, our actual budget will, our actuals will come in probably under budget from what our budget actually is. Is that correct?
That is.
Because we're down three positions across the whole department.
Yes, you'll come in under, yes.
Yep.
When you have vacancy like that, absolutely.
Okay, any further questions? We are moving on to Public Safety, SRO, page 124 in your budget binder, page 140 on your e-packet.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Again, for general clarification for council, this is encompassing three SROs.
Account number 10.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Okay. So our safety officer program, I noticed we picked up several schools within the district, and I'm assuming that the intergovernmental funding is coming from or for those particular positions that we picked up outside of Wassilla itself? Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Johnson, yes. The Matsu Burrows School District picks up 75% of the cost of the SRO program.
Any further questions? Okay, we are moving on to Public Safety, Garage, Budget Binder, page 126, e-packet, page 142. Is there any further questions?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, having read the personnel staff request form, I see that there's plenty of justification for such a position. I feel that there's the need for this, and it's been fully justified, et cetera. My question really comes then to both department history, as well as my experience with staffing such a position. Previously, we've moved our compliance officer out of the police department through administration, now to planning, mainly because of the administration, administrative efforts for a non-police position. My own experience has been, if we at Northern Air Cargo are going to hire a mechanic to work a Stratair airplane in Miami, our mechanic reports to the mechanic supervisor up here in Anchorage, mainly because the mechanic supervisor up here really has the administrative background to handle a mechanic. Now, we have, just across the road, a bunch of mechanics who are working under the Public Works Department. Wouldn't this position be better to be actually under the Public Works Department with a permanently allocated mechanic to the police department and administered out of Public Works?
Number one, I guess, to the mayor, Councilman Johnson, number one, we don't have a mechanic supervisor or the like. Mechanic work is typically contracted out, that kind of thing. So we don't really have a mechanic for, under Public Works. Can it be under Public Works? That's really kind of where it is, because planning is under Public Works. Planning is its own department, but it's administered, if you will, by Archie through Public Works. And this would be probably the same analogy as planning is, okay? Now, it's very possible, and for council too, it came, this has been proposed to be a non-union position, because it really, it really doesn't tie into WPDAs collective bargaining agreement very well. But I could very much see a conversation forthcoming from local 302, the operators. That has yet to be done, but it's possible.
So previously, in our Public Works packet, we approved a new position for a mechanic for Public Works. So now we're adding another mechanic position for the police department.
No, sir.
That last new position, excuse me, was a roads technician, one who's an operator. So yes, we do have some shops, but all our field people are operators to one degree or another. We do some light maintenance on our vehicles, and we take the heavy maintenance in to, like Caterpillar or whoever. So we don't, so we have operators, and as Troy said, we don't have a mechanic position, so to speak.
Okay, is there any further questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
So it's difficult, because this is a new thing. You can't see what this usually cost prior. And my question is kind of to that end. What is this replacing exactly? And when I read the, you know, the description, the explanation, line item explanation, I could see it includes things like wiper blades, air filters, oil filters, oil, pretty basic stuff. And, so is that the intent? It's just to do kind of a wash and wax, and, and basic, you know, change the brake pads? And then the heavy mechanic stuff goes to Kendall, or, you know, somebody to that effect? And then, and then my follow-up question to that is, you know, does this $150,000 that we allocate, is it really justified at that point? I mean, not in theory, not as like an opinion, but I mean, literally, is it, you know, does this cost us $150,000 a year to change air filters and wiper blades and change the oil and do a wash and wax currently?
Madam Mayor, I'll take a stab at this first, and I'll let the chief chime in and Archie as well. From the finance perspective, I was asking the same questions, right? Is this going to cost the city more than current operations of doing an oil change and fixing wipers and changing a headlight? More than likely. It probably will. Going through invoices and whatnot, I mean, I literally didn't open up all the vendor files and start counting invoices to see how many we do in a year. That would take a lot of staff time to figure out. But what I did do is analyze the backend of looking at the cost. And, you know, in round numbers, it's about $50,000 in just basic stuff, right, that I could kind of glean out. Now, your heavy mechanic stuff and whatnot, yeah, you're going to go to Kendall or someplace else. So that's not.
That's not reflected.
That's not, no, because that would be in your repair and maintenance under the patrol or what have you. But there's more of a side to this that's not reflected in the dollars. And that is the side that, for every vehicle that the police have to take to get repaired, requires the lieutenant, a police officer, or two police officers, or what have you. That's two commissions officers that you are taking off the street, dealing with a repair of a vehicle, that now can't actually deal with a legitimate call because they're dealing with a vehicle. And that's a two-way street, meaning they got to go drop it off, and then they got to take them back. At the same time that's going on, you've got a commissioned officer that's actually trying to manage these vehicles, right? So again, you got a commissioned officer where they're a commissioned officer, but yet they're trying to manage vehicles at the same time, when they get repaired and when they don't, and that kind of thing. So there's a cost side that, to that piece, I don't have an answer for. It's kind of one of those unknowns as far as how much, I mean, I could guess what that number is. But that's, that's kind of a key component here, is using our commissioned officers for commissioned work.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. And I'm guessing that there's a nice garage all prepared at the new police station to be staffed as well. My interest was actually more in whether or not we should consider subcontracting this type of service out, as opposed to making a kind of a black sheet position under the Wassilla, under, you know, under the WPD's budget. You know, Mr. Johnson mentioned Public Works, and maybe that doesn't fit either, but doesn't seem like, you know, whoever staffs this position really, I guess, will report to the chief. But, but, and maybe, maybe you've got a mechanic's background, but it doesn't seem that there would be much, what do you call it, accountability for that department, since it would be so isolated and so, it's sort of an island. So I just wonder if maybe it wouldn't work better, even from a budget perspective, to have a subcontracted service that comes in once a week to do basic light maintenance, as opposed to spending $150,000 on a fully staffed position? I don't see where this guy's even going to stay busy, but that's just my personal perspective. I don't know. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Brown, I would support this position 100%. From previous experience, I would have given my right pankey to have this kind of guy in my department when I was a trooper and when I was a commander. Because of the amount of time it eats up from a trooper time to get those repairs done, simple headlight repairs and stuff, it takes up a lot of time going and finding somebody to do that. The chief has control of this person, he can keep him busy there, and I'm sure there's other things that's not listed here that this guy may be doing, but I think with the amount of officers he has and going to have in the future, I think this gentleman or person would be busy and be aware of what the money would be spent. And the service to the officers and relieving that responsibility of them so they can concentrate on police work, I think this is money well spent.
Is there any further questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Johnson again. So by dedicating the person to the police officer, we're really not going to be able to use him as well as we might like to do the same simple tests for the regular fleet cars that we have within the city, if there is any additional time that he would have. And that's where I'm thinking that the administration of the position might be better done in a more broad sense, rather than specific for the police, even though the position would be funded and supported primarily for the police department. That's number one. Point number two is, when I hire a mechanic at Northern Air Cargo, I assume that the mechanic comes with his own tools. I think within the industry, even if you're in a new car dealership or whatever, that is the same assumption, that the mechanic comes with his own tools. So I'm under, I don't quite understand where the $5,000 budget annually for tools are.
Through the mayor, to the council, I have just a little bit of knowledge on that, because I have a son that's a mechanic. And you're correct, there's, there's an expectation that they are going to have tools, but there's also an expectation that the shop's going to have some of the basic tools that's needed for doing the core jobs that are needed on there. They might not have a full, all of the special whatevers, but they've got things that, my son's a heavy equipment mechanic, and the shop has giant torque wrenches. My son's not expected to have those. So there are, mechanic shops do typically have tools available for use.
So then this position will require the mechanic to come with his own tools, and we will supply as a city then the heavier tools for tire mounting and torque wrenches and things like that. The air, the air supply, although not necessarily all of the air impact or the torque wrenches, or, I would expect a mechanic to bring that, the small end pieces to.
I would expect.
To the position.
I would expect a mechanic would have some of their own, their own tools as well.
Okay, any further?
Madam Mayor, just one thing, is this, less this line item explanation, is this meant to be kind of all-inclusive, or certainly not? You know, it says some things in here, and it's got a specific number to each item. And this is what we're talking about, is spending the city's money on these things, so I'm just, I think it's appropriate to ask. Electric pneumatic hand tools and office equipment, $5,000. You know, I mean, what if, I don't see a lift in here, or, you know, any of those types of things. I'm just curious, you know, to what extent is this, like, what kind of latitude do you have to? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so we supply tools to all our other divisions in Public Works, and so there's tools break, there's replacement tools, so that's what this kind of line item is reflecting. When I present the CIP, there's a $50,000 line item to buy the heavy stuff. So there's a vehicle lift and two pieces of tire changeover equipment. So there's a, a vehicle lift, uh, and two pieces of tire changeover equipment. Uh, so the, yeah, the larger stuff's coming in the CIP. This is just small tools and equipment.
Any further questions? Here in none, we're going to take a 10-minute break. And Mr. Bernie, are you on the phone? Mr. Harvey, are you on the phone?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to youth court, page 184. Account number 10.
Madam Mayor, I'm here.
Thank you. Account number 20. Is there any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So although we have a budgeted item here of $86,887, is what we're really saying here is that, uh, the liability to the general budget, in other words, what we are actually going to have to pay as the city is just $25,000. Is that correct?
Mr. Tankersley.
Through the mayor, to Councilman Johnson, actually, no. Uh, the $25,000 is a contribution from the Mats, or, yeah, from the Matsu Borough. Um, and so it kind of, that contribution from the borough comes in as a planning grant, so it does hit the general fund. But then it gets transferred from the general fund to the special revenue fund, the youth court fund. So that line item where it says transfers in general fund there at the very bottom, that's where that's reflected. Okay? The city, this-
I don't understand, you have a governmental transfer in the general fund.
Right, so, um, so when we have the general fund and then we have this youth court fund, the borough is going to give the city this $25,000 through the, through a planning grant. All right? So it's going to come in, it's going to be received over here in the general fund. And we physically have to, through the accounting, move it from the general fund to this youth court fund. So that's the intergovernmental piece. That's, there's an intergovernmental revenue coming in, in the general fund, and then a transfer over to the youth court fund of the same, that same $25,000. All right? So that funding source of the borough ends up in the youth court fund. And then the $52,700 is, um, the juvenile justice grant that comes, okay? Um, and then there's a portion of fund balance, if you will, uh, the youth court that will be used in here. The city's contribution to the youth court fund is through like-kind services. The use of the facility, the furniture it uses, the computer it uses, electricity, et cetera.
In essence, the program costs us almost nothing.
Yes.
Uh, this is a three-quarter, uh, funded position. Who's it, who's it shared with?
I'm sorry?
The other quarter, who's it shared with?
It's not shared. It, the whole three-quarter time position.
It's just, it's just a part-time position.
That's it. Quarter-time position.
Okay.
Any further questions? Here in none, we will move on to number 12, federal asset forfeiture. And it's 187 in your budget binder and it's 203 in your e-packet.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, thank you for your time.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Tankersley.
Madam Mayor, council, um, in looking at the federal asset forfeiture and, if you will, the state asset forfeiture, it's really, they're two separate programs, obviously. One's federal monies, one's state monies. These are monies that the Wasil Police Department, through their investigative approaches and what have you, seized monies, that kind of thing, come, uh, get handled through the feds or the states, and then it comes through into the city. For this fiscal year, there is none planning, we, it's not a budgeted item per se unless we absolutely know that it's coming. And at this time, I don't know of any money coming to the city. That's why you're seeing zero on both of those. Therefore, there's no, we're not asking for any appropriations.
Is there any questions?
Uh, yes, finance officer, uh, Councilman Brown, um, there's been several cities who have been in a bad spotlight for this program. Who, who manage, oversees this program? Is it your office?
Um, well, from the finance side of the House, I mean, we would do any reporting or that kind of receive the funding and do any reporting, but as far as the actual work, um, it's going to be into the investigations, right?
Yeah, to the council through the mayor, uh, the, uh, the police department does not handle their own seizures per se.
Right, that's what I was looking at.
So this would be, uh, seizures that, that happen through like the, uh, the drug enforcement position that goes through the state or through one of the federal agencies and then gets, somebody writes a check to the city for that, uh, participation in the seizure.
All right. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yeah, one quick one here. So Troy, the, so we have a budget set up for it under budget 230 and 270 with no funds allocated and no funds expected. Is that correct?
That is correct. Right now, the funds are, are sitting at zero. Um, we're not anticipating, obviously, receiving any funding, therefore, we're not letting us spend any money.
Okay. Um, Troy, did we cover state asset forfeitures in that also?
I was attempting to because they're both the-
Both the same. Is there any questions? Here in none, we are moving on to number 14, public safety, MACON dispatch. Jacob, you're up. And it's page 131 in your binder and 147 in your e-packet. Okay, we're going to start with account 10. Is there any questions? 50. 60.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, just a question on, um, uh, it might sound silly, but the printing and binding, I'm just curious kind of what changed there.
50/50, is that the line item?
It is. 50/50. 50, yeah, 50/50.
As far as the increase, um, we've had some success on printing recruitment cards, uh, recruitment flyers to hand out. Uh, for example, we did the trunk or treat event at the sports complex for Halloween this year, along with the Smart 911 and other educational materials. Um, I'm hoping to start moving more into advertising for our recruitment and retention, uh, with postings and job applications and those kinds of things, um, along with, uh, getting banners and things like that to hang at those events when we do public outreach events. So just looking to step up our game a little bit there.
Thank you. Do you have a budget for, for that, for, for, uh, you know, what do we call it? Outreach?
Public outreach, um, we've, right now, I'm kind of throwing it in between the printing and binding and the general fund, uh, having created a specific line item, uh, because we're still trying to get our feet on the ground. I was really hoping to launch into it over this last year, but COVID shut down the schools and all that kind of stuff, so we haven't really gotten to jump into that yet.
Thank you. I wonder if we don't just look, look at, um, creating a separate line item at some point in the future. I know that, uh, retention and recruitment has been a hot topic for dispatch, at least from what I've heard, so.
Yeah, and that was actually going to be my goal. Uh, I didn't, like I said, I didn't quite get to it for this year, but that's my goal, is to eventually have a line item for public outreach.
Thank you.
Okay. Account number 60. Is there any further questions? Here in none, we will move on to number 15, cemetery. It's on page 250 in your budget binder and 266 in your e-packet. Uh, Troy, I'm going to let you explain this.
Through the mayor to council, so the, the look of this is slightly different in the sense that you don't see, you know, a whole bunch of line items and that, that kind of thing. But the cemetery fund, um, is what they call a fiduciary fund. Um, it has its own pot of funding, if you will. When Public Works goes out and maintains the cemetery, it's not a dollar-for-dollar relationship. The only thing that the agreement with the cemetery, when it was set up years and years ago, was that any interest earned, and in this case, the imputed interest earned, um, is what gets transferred from this fund over to the general fund, i.e. to assist Public Works in its costs. Um, that's that mere $100 that you see on that page. That's the transfer going over to the general fund. Aside from that is we have plots, uh, ground plots that individuals have acquired over the years, um, and have decided not to use them anymore. So they want to sell them back. Um, so there's an appropriation here for $3,000 that we put in there, um, pretty consistently that allows the city, uh, through the clerk's office and whatnot to, for the city to acquire those plots back. Um, and that's what that funding is for. And that is really all there is to the cemetery, uh, fund itself.
Okay, is there any questions? Here in none, we will move on to non-departmental on page 175 in your budget binder, 191 in
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I might, because we have three, uh, new councils-
Right.
First time coming through this. Um, so instead of trying to group this a little bit, I, I want to try to explain a few of these in a little bit more detail if I can. So starting with, um, the very top up there where it's talking about debt, that's only there because in 2019 was the last year we paid, paid off the GO bond that was, um, at the city. So there's nothing to even look at for this, this fiscal year. In the bottom section though, uh, the non-departmental, um, the first line, insurance deductible broker, that's really our cost, uh, the deductible portion, if you will. Sewer backs up, for example, probably a bad example, but, you know, we have a deductible piece there that the city's got to come and, and pay for. So that's where that comes from. Um, property tax payments, all right? So, um, when the city acquires property, if the city is gaining revenue off that property, i.e. the parking lot, for example, it's no longer tax exempt. So we have to pay tax to the borough for that lot. All right? So that's where that line comes out of. Um, just because the city owns it as a tax exempt entity, like the property that City Hall's sitting on, we don't pay any property tax on that to the borough. But a lot that is enterprise fund, if you will, earning revenue from, then it's no longer tax exempt.
Can I ask you a question about that? What about, um, properties that are leased for $10? I can't remember the dollar amount on, uh, the Iditarod headquarters or, um, maybe for Valley Performing Arts, uh, really low lease rates.
Um, let's see, Valley Performing Arts, I was trying to think if we pay tax on-
James Harvey. Has left.
We pay tax on the, uh, Iditarod either because of that rate, all right? But the parking lot, when we owned the Meta Rose, we had to pay tax on that. Um, any other questions before I move on? Uh, the next line, lawsuit cost settlements, that's that line item I was referred to earlier. And then, uh, the next line, the PPD opioid task force, that is a pass-through, that same $75,000 that you saw in the, uh, with the drug cop coming in from the Matsu Borough that I mentioned. We actually received $150,000 from the Matsu Borough, 75's ours, and then 75 gets passed through over to Palmer. That's why the, uh, PPD Palmer Police Department. The next line, uh, is SART. So that again is a pass-through, comes in from the Matsu Borough. Um, the city picks up, uh, I believe another 2,500 school dis-
James Harvey. Has joined.
And, and one lump sum is paid, uh, paid to Alaska Family Services, uh, for, for the SART program. The section below that are the general fund transfers, um, that are being moved from the general fund to the various other funds. And I talked a little bit about that in, in the slides when I presented the budget as So I hope that, that helps unless there's any other questions.
Okay, and we covered the debt service funds, right? So now we're on to capital project funds, page 258 in your budget binder, 274 in your e-packet.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I actually do need, uh, I'd like to have counts backing up to debt service funds.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Sorry.
Yeah, the, uh, notation here on page 135 is actually incorrect, but I do want to, I do want to mention, uh, because we did talk about debt service funds in the water fund, and then because the water fund is taking care of that last payment, um, the reference here under debt service, and the reason I'm talking about this is really primarily for, uh, public record, is when we talk in general debt service funds, that section of your budget of debt service funds as it relates to where it's talking about our overall debt structure. And on page 253, you'll see the total balance of the water fund, or the water loan, I should say. That principal reduction that's planned equaling zero. I just wanted that to be reflected.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Rafferty.
I did have a question. Um, I was waiting for, for you to go through each item, um, account 80, you know, 99, et cetera. Um, but, uh, my question is on, um, 99, 11?
Are you, uh, non-departmental still?
Uh, yeah, non-departmental. Yeah, you know, the way I understood that last portion there is you were giving a brief overview, but we never actually read these into the record, I don't think.
I thought I was tracking with you, but now I don't think I'm tracking with you.
Well, I just have a simple question. I was just, it's, uh, line ninety-nine eleven.
Alright, so, that, that section, actually ninety-nine eleven, all the way down to ninety-nine forty-one. These are transfers directly going from the general fund over to the capital projects fund, for example. Uh, that million eight thousand is, is being a transfer to that fund specifically to fund capital projects.
Okay, thank you. So, this isn't reflective of the actual budget for capital projects, or?
No.
Okay.
This is a funding source for.
Thank you. That answers all my questions.
Okay. We are moving on to capital project funds, page two fifty-eight in your budget binder, page two seventy-four on your e-packet. And we will start with general government.
This might be a good one. I can just walk through, and Troy will probably help me with the first couple, but we'll just go through each line, and I can give a brief description of it.
Absolutely.
And, uh, and then, for your later on reading, uh, there's individual summary sheets, uh, a few pages beyond, that goes into a little more detail on the projects, uh, not all the projects, but most of them. Okay, so, we're starting out, so this, under, uh, general government, under one-ten, you've got fifteen thousand, uh, lots of equipment replacements, Troy.
Yeah, so, uh, MIS Management and Information Systems Division has requested this fifteen thousand primarily to do a security audit, if you will, that's targeting the switches in firewall, um, in and out of the city. That's what, by a third party. That's really what this is about.
Yeah, Troy, continue.
Fifteen thousand. Do you want me to keep going?
Yeah, the hundred thousand one.
Oh, the phone system? Um, so the phone system, uh, gosh, I'm trying to remember when we replaced our phone system. Um, ten? I think it was two thousand, twenty-ten. Because that's what I want to say. Anyway, our, our existing avia phone system, um...
We're beyond MTA even servicing it.
Yeah, well, MTA doesn't even provide avia phones anymore, um, and whatnot, and, uh, we've been kind of limping this one a little bit, knowing that the, uh, public safety building was being built. Um, and so, and then due to FCC requirements with multi-line phones and the nine-one-one location when you dial a phone, things like that. So, right now, we're technically not in compliance. Um, but that's okay, because we haven't replaced the phones. But the moment we replace the phones, it's going to trigger all that, and we actually do need to do that, because we are at the end of life on these phones. And, um, and now we're just kind of moving it along, so.
I think that's, is that the mayor's vehicle next?
Alright, so, uh, the forty thousand, yes, that is, uh, that is under the vehicle fund. Um, that forty thousand is specifically targeted to replace the mayor's vehicle.
Does anybody want to talk about that? I'm kidding.
I'll see you after this.
And then right next, right underneath that is thirty-five thousand. That's actually to, uh, get a vehicle for code compliance. And then, uh, underneath that is one nineteen under machinery equipment. That's actually in the technology replacement fund. That's actually your computer and server replacements.
Okay, we are...
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Both of these. There's, nothing is listed here, but one of my concerns and what I do on a daily basis, is, is there any plans to devote money to, um, cybersecurity, equipment, personnel?
Uh, well, I don't think the city has the money to fund a cyber, um, expert, if you will. They know what they have, but, uh, and they're very pricey.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, no, we're not, like, planning to, uh, fund personnel in that regard. That being said, my, uh, conversations with MIS, there's many things we do already in our firewall, in our systems, our switches, um, for that purpose. But that also is another reason why MIS is asking for that fifteen thousand to have a third party audit those switches and firewall.
And, and that's what I was looking, because I know what it costs to do that, and fifteen thousand is at the bottom of the...
Well, this is just, uh, this is targeted. This is...
Yeah, yeah. So, you're not doing the whole system there, targeting?
Alright, this is very, very specific.
Okay. Because also, there's CARES money that's going to be devoted to addressing cyber.
Yeah, the new...
The new money.
Yeah. We haven't received yet.
No, it's just, yeah, it's just, I mean, not bringing it up here, and I know there's nothing here, but to bring it up here because of the big issue we have across Alaska right now.
Okay, we are on to public safety, and it is one-ten, four, forty-two-ten, four-twenty dot four-five, which is the WPD garage equipment.
That's what we talked about earlier, as far as outfitting the garage with the heavy stuff. And then, equipment, I think that's IT.
Yeah, the next, that's, uh, for UPS, uh, the power backup systems over there needing replaced. Nine under that, four hundred thousand, that's, um, for PD's vehicles.
Okay, anybody have any questions on any of that? Here are none. We will move on to public works, and it's just vehicles.
Yeah, and public works vehicles.
Then we move on to public works roads.
So, we have three line items there. One is an ongoing, uh, uh, street light improvement to switch our lights to LED. We do those in-house. This is just buying the lights. Next one is buying a new grader to keep our fleet updated. And lastly, there's a, uh, we've gone back and forth on what to do with the water truck. Um, uh, we contracted out now. Um, we're proposing to add a, a water tank to an existing truck, so we can, in the springtime, we, we do two things with the water truck. We're washing sand off the roads, and then we're doing our dust control, uh, with calcium on the gravel roads.
Any questions?
Uh, yeah, the, the grader. Um, in the past, that's been contracted out?
It's both, yeah.
It, so it's, it'll remain as both?
Yes.
Okay.
So, this is a city grader. Uh, we've, this is, uh, and we, we still contract out. Yeah, I put two people out, and then the supervisor will run the grader. So, I'll have up to three at a time that are city forces doing this side of town, and then we contract out the south side of town.
And the contracted work is put out to bid. I, so I assume you know what the figures are historically, and how much that costs and everything. It, does it make sense to have a city, uh, grader regardless, and, you know, given service life and initial cost and maintenance costs and all those things?
So, we've been successful at, uh, so we take pride in the downtown. We, we own the downtown. We maintain the downtown. So, we think that's important, that we're in control of that, not waiting on the contractor. And so, we handle the north side of town while we're here. Uh...
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving...
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, in regards to grader, is that a, just a replacement grader, or an additional grader?
No, it's a replacement. I have two fairly new ones now, and then a third that we employ at times, and that one's passed its useful life.
And that'll be kept on as a standby, or will that be auctioned off the surplus?
It'll be surplused.
Through the mayor, I have an additional question. Um, so this is, uh, this is for maintenance, and, uh, just the caption at the top of my page is capital improvement programs, and I just, maintenance is part of that?
Well, buying, uh, new equipment is.
Okay.
It's a large enough item. It's either five or ten thousand dollars is...
It's usually over ten thousand dollars to, uh, to put in the CIP programs.
And, um, and, uh, maintenance, uh, where, where are maintenance costs going to, uh, pop up here?
So, that's back under, uh, under our roads.
Okay. In the process of our discussion, is that yet to come?
That was the other night.
Okay, so I just missed it. So, that's, apologize for that. I did, I did want to put a plug in about seeing what we can do to, um, either take over, uh, state's, um, maintenance of their horrible roads coming through town, or, um...
They got a project, they just bid it at seven million dollars to redo from Sewer Meridian to Lucas. So, they're going to repeat.
Well, they better get started, then.
Yeah, that's coming soon. That's gonna, they're gonna grind, grind up to upper two inches, uh, put some leveling course, anything that's not being ground, level it up, and then put two inches back.
Do they have anything to say about maintenance of their right-ofways? Beautification, et cetera? Talking about just general, like mowing?
No, that's, we, we take that on. If it's going to get done, it's us.
Okay, so I'll just have to...
Well, no, I take that back. So, they've been better, uh, so the issues come up about weed control before and, and invasive weeds, and, and the state has gotten back on board with knocking down, uh, some of these right-ofways with their big mowers. Now, we like to get the, the one, the stretch of grass from, from Main Street over to Spinar Builders, um, because that takes, that looks better groomed with our flower beds and the smaller equipment. But they've done good about getting KGB road and, uh, some of the parks highways with the big stuff, uh, the last couple of years.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
To Archie, is that this year that they plan to do the parks through Wasilla?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Okay, moving on to one-thirty easement slash row, right-ofway.
That's just an ongoing account. If something comes up where we do need an easement, we have a source of funds to go purchase it, whether it's for a road, or a water lane, or a sewer lane.
Okay. Account one-sixty, road paving.
Well, that's the big initiative, uh, when the sales tax voted to increase it for the police station, and then sunset a half a cent, and, and retain a half cent, uh, wanted to throw a big chunk of that at, at road paving. And so, you, earlier, earlier meetings, you saw what we're planning on the road paving program, and that's where this is funded out of.
Okay. Um, one-sixty is the Alaska Railroad Crossing Improvement.
So, we have like five crossings in town, and we have to, it's our privilege to put our road over their, their railroad. So, if there's any costs associated with that, it falls on the city, uh, and we, we cover that two ways. Uh, there's, I have another line item in roads maintenance that covers smaller, smaller items for repair. But we have a CIP line item for, like, as Troy mentioned, if it's over ten thousand dollars, it, it's really tracked as a capital improvement, although not our capital improvement. But, uh, if there's a major problem with a crossing, we get the bill.
Now, the KGB road, that is actually a state road.
That one is. That one's going to become ours, though.
Oh, it'll become ours?
Yeah, with the couplet.
Okay, are they going to do anything with the railroad crossing, uh, this year?
No. I mean, not the capital improvement. I mean, the state's, yeah, the state's on the hook for that for a few more years, that crossing.
Okay, because that's getting really rough.
It's gonna, yeah, it's gonna get, when we take it over, it'll be completely rebuilt, along with the new one on Yanlo-Talkeena. So, that'll be the couplet.
But they will fix it this summer?
That's, I don't know what their schedule is. I mean, they're going to be repaving the parks highway. They might capture some of that.
Yeah, because that's getting really...
The crossing itself, or the pavement.
The crossing, the crossing itself.
Well, that'd be, yeah, no...
I mean, you've got a, you've got a, sticking up an inch or two.
Yes. No, that's an annual thing for them to, to back those and get them back to snuff.
Okay, Smith Ballfield's access road.
So, that's something I've, well, COVID helped me drag my feet on, and the state's going to actually build that road when they do KGB. So, I don't think we need to put any city money into it. There was a time, when that project first came out, uh, um, you know, that wasn't in the cards, and then they had enough public testimony about, you know, you're reducing access, so they, they opened up the project to a bunch of, uh, secondary roads, both here and in the borough, and, uh, and they saw the value of putting that, that access in for Smith Ballfields. They, they're going to lose their direct access to KGB, but now, that's a, uh, that's going to be a state-funded piece.
Okay. Okay, we are under public works property maintenance. Uh, the town site restoration.
That's annual funding, uh, to improve the town site. In fact, I'm going to come back with a budget adjustment there. My, uh, maintenance people tell me about an extra rough we need to fix, replace over there, so I think I'm going to, uh, come back. I want, uh, this particular to have that at twenty-five thousand instead of fifteen. So, that'll, that's something I'm going to be proposing through the mayor, um, when we look at amendments.
Okay. Train station improvements.
That's to do site work, continue site work over there in preparation for actually landing a train. So, we got the building moved last year, uh, and Chambers about ready to move into it. Uh, the couplet project is driving us to actually move that train stop, and so that's what we've been working on for a number of years. So, this is, this money is going to do the work in the railroad right-ofway. Uh, five hundred foot of platform, well, it'll be gravel fill with some asphalt, but it's, it's where you can actually be able to walk to the train from the depot.
Okay. Jake Rat Fire Hall Parking Lot.
That's the last bit of funding to, uh, do some landscaping and, and lighting to finish that project up.
Okay. Any questions?
Madam Mayor? Um, yeah, I just have some questions about, well, it's, it's kind of like this, this thing that, um, for me, pops out pretty big, and it's just, when we got these road projects, even if it's repaving, um, I never see any, anything budgeted for designer engineering services. And, of course, it's my industry, but I'm a vertical design guy. I've got nothing to do with horizontal, so don't go thinking that, trying to drum up a job here. Um, but I really think, you know, I know due to, from being in the industry, that it's very, very important to have good, solid design to base your construction off of, and that it can actually make the construction less expensive and more efficient, and it certainly always makes the result better. And, uh, you know, repaving, I think, I think one of the issues with repaving in the city of Wasilla is that, um, it, it would be pretty easy to just go in there with the paving truck and put blacktop down, and, and, where is the repaving page? Um, I just saw it. Um, so, one hundred percent of that budget is allocated to construction. Um, yeah, it's all under construction. So, we've got nothing in engineering. We've got nothing, you know, and I, I just think it would, it at least deserves a quick look. An engineer's opinion, a third-party engineer, not a city engineer, but somebody who is, uh, hired to provide a, uh, impartial... engineer, not a city engineer, but somebody who is, uh, hired to provide a, uh, impartial opinion or a professional, um, analysis of our roads to figure out, including a dig and a test hole, figuring out where the utilities are vertically, you know, if, if they're shallow, it can be a problem. If it's, if they're deep enough, you got more latitude to do it right. Um, our right of ways vary in width from 50 feet to 60 feet and up. Um, I don't know if we've got any narrower than 50 feet, but I know that we've got some challenges, um, in, in upgrading our roads. And I just wonder if we can put all of the budget on construction and expect a lasting result. And, um, you know, personally, I, I would really like to see on, on every horizontal construction project, uh, a real emphasis to start to be placed on design and engineering so that we can account for future, uh, demands and future, um, pressure that's gonna be put on our infrastructure. Uh, maybe even the ability to expand that infrastructure in the future could be engineered in now. So, um, our stormwater system is incomplete and, and partial, um, fragmented. Um, I think, you know, city water and sewer, I think, could definitely use some help as well in, in some areas. And I think it's all a very good opportunity when we go in and we do major construction project on a road to bring these things up to snuff. But if we don't have kind of a over, overall analysis or, or a grand design or some type of, uh, you know, engineered approach, we just go straight to construction, which is what the numbers are telling me. I'm not trying to use my own opinion here, but I'm just.
No, you're correct. So I didn't pull that detail out yet. And so virtually everything we do, as you suggest, um, I've, I've got one, um, one thing I've been, uh, I've got a new hire, okay? So Bob Walden's been able to take a bunch of this on and dig into it so I don't over-engineer it. Uh, uh, but I have yet to figure out what that number is. But I don't need it fully. He's been doing this for 10 years at the borough, uh, putting specs together, is putting this out to bid, doing inspections. So I'm trying to ride his coattails as much as possible. Uh, so he's, he's the front man on, on the paving program. Uh, yeah, any surveying we're gonna need, any potholing we're gonna need, that's all gonna be factored in.
So we will see some kind of, uh, budget for our line item?
Yes.
That accounts for that?
Yes.
And, uh, how does that work here within our, this budget discussion? So we're talking about, um, this million dollars for paving is in this fiscal year that we're discussing. So where does the, where's the budget?
I can bring that back as an amendment.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see, I'd like to see that. And, um, I think it's very, very important.
Yeah, no, and we do it as a routine basis. That just, it was just a placeholder from a couple of years ago, throwing a million dollars at it. And then, uh, I fully intended to do an RFP for an engineer, uh, until I hired Bob Walden. So, uh, I'm, I'm riding that, uh, to see where it takes me and then see how we augment it.
Now, knowing that some of these engineering jobs might be beyond the scope of one person, a city employee, um, you might even have to look at putting this out to bid to get engineering services for certain projects, certain roads and things, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So a lot of this that we're looking at does not have a lot of the infrastructure issues that you mentioned. Uh, but for instance, when we did rebuild Nelson Avenue, whenever, that's been a number of years ago, uh, so that, that road unraveled, had no storm drain. We put the storm drain in, we put water sewer stub outs in, and so that was between Lucille and, and, and Main Street. So that's an example of, yeah, we go in there, uh, we wanna plan for all that so we don't have to dig it up again. And now we're almost out, it's gotta be 20 years because that's already showing signs, uh, some age signs on that road. But uh, I've got someone looking at buying two lots in there and that was his question, is there water sewer stubbed out? And we, in fact, we did it when we paved that road or repaved it. Yep.
So Archie, I'm the mayor, who's, um, Archie, um, so is John a PE?
Yes.
Is that it? Okay. So actually, he, Bob, I'm sorry. So Bob really does our own internal engineering?
Well, I've got that capacity now.
Yeah.
He worked for Granite and Wilder for 10 years in the field.
Right.
Building roads. And then he's been at the borough on the government side for the last 10 years. He's been doing this for 20 years.
So we don't have to necessarily contract that as a line item because you're already paying a salary?
No, that's right. Yeah, I don't.
So we don't necessarily need that?
No, I think.
Jordan, do you follow what I'm saying?
We're gonna need a surveyor, for instance. We're gonna, we may need some extra help with the professional side.
Sure.
And that's the number I'm gonna bring.
Right. So I do follow what you're saying. And here's, here's the issue that I guess I'd like to highlight that comes up. And this isn't, this is a real thing and it's not, I'm not making this up. Um, a client and a contractor and a designer, it's a three-part, it's a, it's a triangle. And, uh, you, you really have to have some, some amount of separation between the three because the city has interests and the public has interests and oftentimes they don't, they don't match. And it's important, in my view, to have somebody that's third-party that can be impartial and neutral and that isn't guided to a solution, um, but to just put the facts out there. And now I.
So Jordan, as a, as a professional engineer, okay, I understand your dilemma exactly, but holding a professional license, you are not, uh, necessarily to be guided by the, by your employer. You must be accountable, okay, to the safety and to the regulations that you are trying to enforce, or you can lose your license. I mean, that's just the way that it is. I mean, I, I, that's just.
I know exactly what you're saying and I, I don't need a lecture on that for sure. I, I do know what you're saying. Understand that professional licensing has its own code of ethics and everything. Um, regardless, this, this is an issue and it is something that happens. And, and I think that it's important and it would serve the public best to at least have, um, an opinion of a third-party engineer on any project that requires major construction. Um, you know, I, I could.
Well, then there's no point in hiring a professional engineer within your own organization.
There is.
Well, tell me about it then, sir.
Yeah, and it's, and I don't know if it's an appropriate place in a budget discussion to do this, but, um, to, to back check the work.
Okay, we're getting way into the weeds. We're here for the budget and that's what we're gonna do. Troy?
I can't help but put a plug in just simply for this million dollars. So the million dollars, even though in the detail is referenced as construction, what we said was a million dollars per year to fund road paving. Road paving meaning construction, engineering, surveying, I don't care what you wanna call it, it's still a million dollars. Now, that being said, if council wants to go 1.5 million dollars, that's fine. Bear in mind that you're dipping into fund balance of the general fund. I've already said that we're, you were planning to use over 700,000 of fund balance. Um, ideally, we wouldn't, uh, curtail that further. But, uh, it, it's just something to be aware of.
Bring this full circle since I brought the question forward. Um, I'm, Archie, I'm totally satisfied with your answer. Uh, my question was just related to the fact that the entire million literally was under the construction line item in the budget that we're discussing today. And so that was my question. Arch, I asked and answered. Archie answered my question, so I'm satisfied with that. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll bring back an amendment to show us more detail.
Okay, we're moving on to the museum, uh, the museum building.
So there's 75,000 there and that's intended to, uh, so we've relocated the museum, um, we're almost there, uh, into the old library. Um, we're, we're doing renovations to it and the goal for this 75,000 is to restore the upstairs log structure to its original uses, community hall. So there's still a bunch of work to do and I'm, I'm kinda cringing it, pulling the, it's got wallboard on, on, in, with logs behind it. We wanna pull that wallboard off and see what we have to really tune up the logs and, and restore that to historic condition.
Okay. Okay, Public Works Parks Maintenance.
So that's just ongoing small projects in parks that we do, um, the 25,000. The next one, 50,000 for Bumpus. So it looks like we're gonna get a grant, a matching grant for Matsu Trails. Um, so that 50,000 is to match. So it'll be a hundred thousand dollars worth of trail improvements focusing on, uh, the trail that Wasilla High School wants to use, um, or is using. Uh, we've done some in-house work to that trail, but we wanna get it to the next level and also restrict access, um, from four-wheelers from coming into the park there. So that's, it'll be a hundred thousand dollars. And that's gonna come forward with more detail as we get that grant, uh, grant offer. And we'll wanna appropriate that sooner rather than later. Get the Matsu Borough piece appropriated, uh, so we can start spending some of that before July 1.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Councilman Brown, it's not here. Is there some plan in the future for what was to be the Steelers football field revert back to the city? Uh, what's?
So Wasilla Youth, so that's gonna be coming towards you. So Wasilla Youth Soccer, who's already been very successful in, in the park with developing fields, is gonna take that on.
Okay, uh, Lake Lucille Campground Improvement.
That's again, ongoing improvements, uh, making the campsites a little bigger, uh, making extra campsites, running water to restrooms. It's just handful of little stuff to make our life easier maintaining it and making the park a little more pleasant for the users.
Equipment Attachments.
Uh, let's see. That's for the, oh, that's for a scissor lift. Where am I at?
Okay.
Bobcat, who, no, I lost track. You said attachments.
24,000.
Okay.
It's a scissor lift.
Yeah, okay. So that's a scissor lift for our bobcat for doing, uh, banners. Uh, so we have to rent one all the time doing banners, uh, and other maintenance activities. This gives us a scissor, scissor lift, uh, uh, to do maintenance and change out banners.
Any questions on Public Works Parks Maintenance? Here in Nun, the, uh, we are going to sewer.
Uh, so septic tank replacement, that's ongoing. We've, I've, I've had to increase that over previous years. Those are getting more expensive. So, uh, our sewer connects each have a, uh, septic tank involved. And so the developer installs it and then we own it forever. Uh, so an example is, uh, the one at Wendy's, um, gave out. They rust through, if they're steel at times, they last 20 years, 25 years. That one was right in the drive aisle for the, uh, drive-through. So pulling that curb and gutter and pavement and putting a tank in, that, those get to be pretty pricey. So we're budgeting a hundred thousand a year. Or this could be a residential one, um, Lake Lucille Drive. It just runs the gambit.
Sewer Repairs.
That's similar account, uh, that's, if we get a broken main line in the system, that's what that line's for, or, uh, if something at the sewer plant, it's major, a major repair.
Security Cameras Repairs.
So we, so the utility has quite an infrastructure of cameras on all the water sewer facilities. And so those, those go out at times and this is to replace failed cameras.
Sewer Treatment Plant Improvement.
So we're doing the pilot study, uh, as we speak for the last several years now. That's, that's showing real promising signs. And, uh, this is some placeholder money. We gotta get through final permitting. I'm not sure what that's gonna look like, a combination of engineering and/or some modifications to that outfall study. It could be some birmingham. We're not sure this, this, what we're doing is putting wastewater through wetlands and it's treating the ammonia. Uh, but it's out of the box as far as DEC is concerned, uh, how to permit it. And I'm, um, just planning to have some money available. Stan Tech's our consultant on that. Um, they, you know, they'll, you know, that's probably half engineering and half if I have to add some gravel here or do something here or monitoring wells there, uh, monitoring points.
Okay, any questions on sewer? Moving on to water, Richmond Hill Station.
So we covered that quite a bit last meeting, but I'll go over it briefly again. We have a booster station, uh, that's over by the Alaska Club. It serves every bone between, uh, Lithia and, uh, Red Robin up on the hill. Um, it boosts the pressure, but we have no redundancy there. We have more development coming. Uh, so we're proposing, um, in fact, you'll be seeing that initial appropriation and contract coming forward with CRW Engineering. Uh, we did an RFP for that, uh, to put a parallel booster station in. So right now, if I have to take a pump out, I actually have to turn the water completely off to those folks. Uh, so there's, and we have a hotel coming. We gotta have a, other development coming. So this is, I think it's vital that we get this, uh, piece of infrastructure in.
Okay, Water Repairs.
Yeah, so with sewer, we've got some, uh, basic accounts for if a water line breaks or if I have a, a repair at one of the water treatment buildings, uh, or, or, uh, PRV buildings, any of the water infrastructure that, uh, have a major repair.
Oversized Water Main.
So code, uh, develop, excuse me, developer comes in, extends water main on their nickel. Uh, but if we want it oversized, code says if it's over eight inches. So for instance, if we want a 12-inch line, it's, uh, we'll pay for the material cost difference and buy an eight-inch pipe versus 12-inch pipe. They still install it all, uh, but when we do a mainline extension agreement, uh, all the fees and what we're, we're given credit for and what we're gonna pay for is all spelled out in a mainline extension agreement.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I'm not exactly sure where this would fall under. I know in the past there's been discussion about, uh, installing fire hydrants in the Mission Hills subdivision. And I'm just wondering if that's, something's gonna fall under this section or where it would be discussed.
You're exactly right. It's coming up shortly.
Awesome, there you go.
Oh, the next one.
Security Cameras and Repairs.
Next couple. Uh, that's the same with the, the sewer. Uh, actually, we got far more in the water side. We got far more water infrastructure out there. So.
Okay.
Covering security cameras and then the Mission Hills Fire Hydrant Project, uh, that's setting money aside every year to add some hydrants in that area. Uh, we hope we actually break some ground this year and, and start knocking some of those out. So the developer way back when, that was its own water system. It had a well, but they did oversize all the pipe in there. Uh, so you could add, add hydrants later. Uh, and so we, we took that water system over a number of years ago. Uh, then it started showing signs of arsenic. And then we ran some of our Bumpus water. We tied it into our main water system. So you can't run, as a well system, there was never enough water to have a fire hydrant. Now, it's been on our system for a number of years with, uh, with the ability to actually make fire flow happen. So that's, that's, that's a project.
Okay, Reservoir Repairs.
Yeah, we've had to do minor repairs over the years, wind damage mostly. Uh, the big-ticket items are coming up in the out years. Uh, interior, uh, paint on these, uh, gives out over time. So we'll have to take the reservoir down over the time in the next few years and, uh, and repaint the inside with, uh, uh, that drinking waterproof paint. So that's a big deal. That's a big project.
Okay.
We cambered them about 10 years ago. They were pretty good shape, but that's coming.
Is there anything factored in here for improving water pressure from, from said tanks? So.
So anytime you can, we designed by gravity. So most of the town, uh, it's that reservoir elevation that, so right to this building, it's all gravity-fed. Uh, so the pressure is just fixed on elevation. With that said, the booster station is the one area that we don't have a reservoir up there. And that's, that's exactly what the booster station does, is to maintain, uh, you know, working pressure. But we're not, we don't need to increase pressure. I know the fire, firefighters, uh, we get some feedback from the fire marshal about sprinklers, uh, older sprinkler systems and, uh, but we're still running the same pressure we've always run. It's probably 55 PSI right here.
It, it hasn't been an issue of limiting development?
No.
Okay, any other questions on water? Moving on to the airport, Airport Apron Improvements.
So that's setting money aside every year to do, from an airport stand, point of view, small-scale projects. We get the multimillion-dollar stuff funded by 93% by FAA. But we have smaller work. I've got two small projects going on now. I've got engineers looking at a new area, doing a preliminary plan and some cost estimates to open up, excuse me, more lease lots. So that's, I've got an engineering firm doing that. If I'm changing out LED lights out there, it would come out of this account. If I'm running utilities in for a new hangar development, we'll, we'll run utilities, get some gas and electric in there on the airport project so we can have tenants in there.
Okay, runway maintenance, FAA.
So this is our entitlement money. So we get 150,000 a year, and we're putting that into some pavement maintenance. We have some large cracks. We can't just crack seal anymore in the runway. So that's, that's being engineered now, and that'll go out to bid. 300,000. Been saving that money for two years to spend 300,000 on, on some runway maintenance.
Any questions on airport? Hearing none, we move on to the Curtis Menard Memorial Sports Center and building improvements.
So there's two ongoing accounts there, one for building improvements and one for equipment. So that's ongoing, ongoing stuff for the Menard Center. If they need a new floor somewhere, that's coming out of the building. Joe needs equipment, and it's coming out of the second line item.
Okay, storage building.
So that was brought up earlier tonight. The concept was originally, what can we do to facilitate the farmer's market moving out to the Menard? So it started out as an idea of some large pavilion structure, and we're targeting, so this would go in on the rodeo side. So we looked at that, and it made more sense to do a series of small ones. I think it's going to be more cost-effective per square foot. And we, we built a really nice one ourselves that we want to mimic. So the one that's over by the playset, we thought that turned out nice and to keep with that same theme. So we built, we bid that out. We're going to bid that out this, this year. It could be that we bid, the base bid is three of these pavilions, and then there's additive alternates depending on the building for a fourth or a fifth one. So they'd be more in a row along the road, along the bike path. It fits better on the site, and it would support other events at the Menard, not just the farmer's market.
Okay, any questions on the Curtis Menard Sports Center? Hearing none. Archie, you want to go over these budgeted revenue sources, or?
Well, that's Troy's deal.
Oh, Troy!
I just spent it.
Well, it's pretty simple. There's only two sources of revenue here, 150,000 coming, as Archie mentioned, for the airport. And then the 4.6 is basically either water-funded, sewer-funded, airport-funded, or transfers coming from the general fund directly.
Okay. Budgeted projects by fund.
That's just a breakdown of the varying funds that we have, that, and the expenses associated to them, as, as per the above projects.
Okay, enterprise funds.
Same, I just explained.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, any questions?
Troy, so your budgeted funds, then, let's say like vehicle replacement fund, we've seen that one in many of the other department budgets, and that's just sort of a summary of the whole department as we go across. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
The total of 625,000 is being-
I just used that in a second.
Yeah, yeah. You're, you're spot on.
Okay, is there anything else on this budget that we have covered tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to exit the committee of the whole.
Madam Mayor, so moved?
Is there a second?
Councilman Brown, second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Johnson and seconded by Councilmember Brown to exit committee of the whole. Is there any objection? Hearing none, we are out of the committee of the whole at 8:25. And is there anyone present who would like to address City Council at this time? Seeing none, we will go on to, Madam Clerk, your comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if it's okay with the body, we'll go ahead, since we've finished up work, we'll go ahead and cancel our tentative meeting that we had scheduled for Wednesday to continue department presentations, since we've concluded them this evening. So we'll get that meeting canceled. We meet back here the following Monday, the 26th, for our regular City Council meeting. That night is our first public hearing on the budget. Something different for our new members, the mayor will actually not close the public hearing, rather she'll continue it to the 28th. We have a special meeting on the 28th. Once the public hearing is closed on the 28th, we'll have a main motion to adopt the budget ordinance, 2121. And at that point in time, any amendments to the budget are in order. If you have amendments to the budget, we prefer them in writing. We prefer them ahead of time. We create a little packet, we number them, and it really helps kind of the process go along more smoothly. That's not to say that you can't make amendments from the floor, but we would love them in writing. So if you do have, you know, you've kind of heard about the budget, Councilmember Rousa, I know you listened to the session that you, you missed, so maybe there's some questions there, or you weren't sure. If you all are going to have budget amendments, if you could have them to me by Monday at noon, I'll work with Finance Director, we'll get them all prepared, and then we can have actual little packets available that hopefully on Wednesday, then we'll, we'll start going through and taking action on those. Does that work for everybody? Okay, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Rousa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sure nice to have meaningful discussion on things. Appreciate staff's responses. I know a lot of people have left, but appreciate the clarification on the items of discussion tonight, and very, very good meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey.
No comment.
Councilmember Brown.
No comment, Mayor.
Councilmember Bernie.
No comment, Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson.
No comment.
Well, thank you all for your time, and it's been relatively painless. Oh, I'm sorry, Nikki.
That's okay. Now I should just make some comments, just to make it look like you really screwed up, but-
Yeah, exactly. Make a big long comment.
I wouldn't violate you.
I am so sorry.
But I was going to say no comment.
Well, I just can't read tonight. Anyway, thank you all for your time, and I appreciate everybody. So have a good evening, what's left of it, and we will see you all here Monday night. We are adjourned at 8:28.
Jane Sorgi.